President.
Watson.
Here.
McCain.
Here.
Wertz.
Here.
Hyon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Rust. Handfelder.
We start with the omnibus agenda and it's been requested we want to go that item at a time. Is that correct, Julie?
Yes, I would like to do that because I think we each have a lot of questions about line items, so is that okay with you?
That's okay.
It just means a couple more roll calls, right?
Okay, all right. So the first item is approval of the minutes. Item A. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any questions regarding the minutes of the last meeting? If not, call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Next would be the financial highlights. B. Item B. Is there a motion to approve the financial highlights?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, made and seconded. And any discussion? No discussion? Call for the vote?
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is item C, bills. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, been made and seconded to approve the bills. Any questions regarding the bills?
I have some questions and I guess we can just go through these, whatever page I'm looking at. I guess somebody will answer it. Is Mary here or Nancy?
Yes, dear.
Okay. The first one on page 12, the couple of board books that I've looked at now, they have maintenance broken down by location. So just for example, on this page, there's custodial services for N.O. Nelson is 95 some hundred dollars for the field station, which I assume is Ingraham. Oh, who said that? Where are you, Nancy?
Right.
Okay. And that's $5,200 in St. Pat's or Scott Bibb is $3,400. So I've seen those out two months and I'm not going to, you know, say we can't pay those, but it does make me wonder how much in total each year we're spending to maintain all those locations. I think we've talked about this before where it would be nice to see a report and I, from what it looks like, it might be fairly easy because your expenses are broken down by location and hopefully you can just press a button and do a report by location. But I think it would be good for the board to see how much we're spending to maintain all of these.
We have that.
Good, okay.
So you want that for the July meeting, is that?
I think that would be, I mean, it's not any trouble to get it for them. Okay, and then just various questions. On page 15, there's a charge to Tara Design Studios for landscape design for $8,500. What is that?
That's a contract we have with a firm that does consulting on the landscaping and gives us advice and counsel on the gardens and things.
So are we going to continue to have that or do we have people in-house that do that or?
Well, they consult with the people in-house, so kind of, you know, so each year we have a unique garden exhibit and so they give us advice and counsel on how to do like special garden exhibits each year. This year, you know, next year will be our 50th anniversary, so, you know, they'll probably focus on the 50th anniversary. This year it's on, it's called sensations, sort of emphasizing the senses in the gardens. So we have, you know, different pocket gardens. We have 200,000 people that visit the campus every year and the gardens are a big part of that.
So how much would you project that we are going to pay this company in a year?
It's in the range of 30,000, something like that. I'll have to check and see for sure. I don't want to quote a number without knowing.
It's a contract. When does it start and end?
It's an annual contract.
Okay, okay. On page 20, there's the usual legal bill for 17, or yeah, $17,000. And last month, I think it was like 18,000. Is that typical for that?
It ranges, you know, by how much we use the legal services and, you know, how much is going on in terms of either HR or contracts or grants review. So it ranges each month, but we can get you those annual bills too.
Yeah, so I think we've talked about this before. I would like it if the, you know, Board of Trustees could just like go sit in a room and look at these bills without them being redacted. Is that allowed or?
The bills, but I think the actual content of some of the HR records would not be.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just look at them and see what we find, huh? Okay. Then on page 25, there's a payment to Bree's Journal.
Yep.
And I'm guessing that's for printing that fancy booklet we get in the mail. Is that what that's?
Marketing publication materials, right?
Is there anybody in the district that can do that work?
That's bid. We bid that. There's a low bid. It's a low bid.
Hmm, that's too bad. There's nobody in the district that can do that.
Well, people capable, they just didn't bid low bid.
Yeah, okay. All right, those were the things that I wanted to discuss. Thank you.
Julie, may I ask a question? Have you been to all the facilities to see as far as custodial services and what that entails?
I've been to Ingraham and I've been to N.O. Nelson. I haven't been to Scott Bibb. I've driven by it. I've driven by Carlinville and Jerseyville, but I know that these are probably not excessive charges, but I'm just, it just wants, leads me to wonder how much in total these, these.
I was just wondering, you know, the size of the building and what is needed there.
Yeah, yeah. No, I guess I'm not questioning the size of the charge. I'm just wondering in total what it costs to maintain these buildings.
We'll supply that. It's not a problem at all.
I guess I have a question for Nancy. Would it be possible to create something from this that would be sorted by vendor, total payments by vendor? You think so? Okay. Yeah, I would think that'd be, kind of, could be kind of informational. Maybe, I don't know if you can have it for the next meeting, but for sure the August
Okay, Nancy, I got another question for you. There's two sections in here. One is called invoices pending board approval and the other one is checks issued requiring board approval. Can you easily explain why there are two groupings?
Is there a microphone that if we're going to have?
Okay, so that's what I figured. So there's already been checks issued, but maybe they haven't gone out or they have gone out or?
Checks that have pending board approval don't go out until the board approves them.
Okay, so you're just one step ahead on these and that you got the checks ready to go and?
On the ones pending board approval. However, the ones that have been approved are the weekly ones that are travel expense reports, utility bills that need to be paid prior to the board. So they go out on a weekly basis. So they're pending, they're on here as already.
The invoices pending board approval? That's what that is? Okay, I just wondered what the difference was.
Okay.
So for example, on Bree's Printing, would we, last month, have seen them in the grouping called invoices pending board approval?
No.
No.
That was written now. They're pending to go out now, this time.
Okay. Do they, do they issue us? Do they issue an invoice?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't pay without an invoice.
Okay, so why is it that they don't appear on the invoices pending approval?
What page are you on?
Well, the checks issued requiring board approval, page 25, that's where Bree's Printing is. And I'm just wondering if they, you know, if they sent us an invoice, I would think that at some point would be on the pages that are titled invoices pending board
I don't think they are. I don't think they're duplicated.
Well, I wouldn't expect duplicates exactly, but.
Probably just an issue of timing.
Right.
These have gotten one step further in the process, but they haven't gone out though, right?
The issued, checks issued requiring board approval have not gone out.
Yeah. I think they're just one step further in the process. I don't know. That's my guess.
It has the dates on there, you know, from, and so it's, you know, pretty straightforward.
It's just crazy accountant questions.
I'm not sure I'm clear about what you want us to do. So if you could restate what you want to see, yeah, please. On the Bree's, you know?
No, I wasn't exactly stating anything that I wanted to see. I was just that I was trying to understand the process better. In other words, like when a vendor, in this case, Bree's Distributing, sends Lewis and Clark an invoice, what happened? When does it appear on the reports and under what caption does it appear? Would that invoice appear under invoices pending approval or would it appear under checks issued pending approval?
That's what I'm trying to look at, the different information for you.
I think Julie's correct. That's just a step. Both of them are requiring board approval.
It's not a big deal, yeah.
The ones pending board approval haven't been approved until you give us those. The checks issued requiring board approval have already gone out because they're travel expenses. So we're asking you to please approve them after the fact. We're more of an informational because it's already checks issued.
Any other questions? Motion has been made and seconded that we approve the bills. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Sorry. Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Item D, Treasurers' Report. Motion to approve that? So moved. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Treasurers' Report. Are there any questions? No questions or are there? Call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Motion approved. Item C or E, the balance sheet. Is there a motion to approve the balance
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion to approve the balance sheet and a second. Is there any discussion on the balance sheet?
I hope you can answer this. If you can, it's okay. So on page 41 is the combining balance sheet, current unrestricted and restricted funds. And I noticed under working cash fund, there's a negative 6.2 million. I'm guessing that's from a few years ago when we borrowed from that fund? Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, that's the due-to, due-from account.
Yes.
So it's like a borrowing back and forth, yes.
So is that when the state were, they were not paying and we had to take money out of the working cash fund? Do you?
I wouldn't think so, but that's, Mary deals with the working cash, so I'm sorry that's.
Yeah, and I don't know, maybe there's a statutory explanation, but what, what goes in working cash? Where does that come from?
So you can issue, initially when the college was founded in 1970, you could issue working cash bonds. Unlike the high schools, if colleges, community colleges issue working cash bonds, we can only borrow from working cash and pay it back and then we can accumulate interest. So over the 40-year period, through the conservative, you know, sort of financing, basically we had interest money available. So when the state didn't pay, then we can spend the working cash interest to balance without going out for other funds. So we did issue, we had authority to issue a second round of working cash funds, which we did. And so that put back the reserves after the state, you know, took the working cash interest to balance our budget for those two years. So we're holding working cash now for, you know, cash flow. And so then accumulating interest again.
You can only borrow from working cash, so I think it's borrowing into the other funds until the taxes hit. So once the taxes hit, those numbers should go down.
Yeah, that's what I.
That's my theory.
Yeah, well, ma'am, I, maybe I need to ask Mary about it because it looks to me like there's, you know, 6.2 million came out of working cash and was not put back and I just wondered what the plan was there. And if I look in current fiscal year, on the next page, it shows, you know, what's going in and out of those funds. And so it's not from this fiscal year that that 6 million came out, but.
We can explain that, but I think it's going to be, you know, that one, those fiscal years where we had to borrow from working cash.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if that needs to be paid back, but maybe can't answer that tonight.
Mary can give you a better answer, I'm sure, than I can, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Item F, Statement of Revenue and Expenditures. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second. Been made and seconded to approve the Statement of Revenue and Expenditures. Any discussion?
So again, you may not know this, but on page 44, there's a combining statement of changes in fund balances. And it basically shows the revenues coming in, expenditures going out of the funds, including debt service. And it looks like we take money out of operations and maintenance restricted fund and move it to debt service. And we also take it out of the, I don't know what restricted current funds are, and move it to debt service. So we're taking money out of these other funds to pay for debt service. Is that correct? 2.7 million?
We do move money from there.
So there's not enough in the debt service fund to pay the debt service? So we have to move it out of other funds? Is that what's going on?
That's what we do.
Okay.
That's part of the fund accounting.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
Any other questions? Been a motion made and seconded to approve the Statement of Revenue and Expenditures. Call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Item G, Adjustments to Accounts Receivables. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
A second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the adjustments to accounts receivable. Are there any questions?
Okay, so on this, looks like we're wanting to write off 168,000, right?
Correct.
And a big chunk of that is the return of Title IV funds. Since I'm new to this, can you explain to me what's happening there? I see that you gave us a list of people.
Angela Weaver's here. Angela Weaver can explain that. She's the Director of Financial Aid.
Okay.
Those are legally required returns to the federal government.
That's what I'm thinking. And I'm thinking that these, all these pages add up to the 132. Is that right?
I think they add up to the 168.
Okay, yeah, I bet you're right. Because it's not just Title IV, it's all of them. So is that right?
Yes.
Angela, did you say her name?
Yeah, Angela.
Yeah, so all of those add up. So is this a common thing? Is this a?
Yes.
And is it a typical amount?
Yes.
Go ahead, Angela, explain.
Yes. So students who completely withdraw from classes, who receive some type of federal funding, whether it be federal student loans, federal SEOG grant and the federal Pell grant, if they have attended less than 61% of the semester, we're required by law to return a certain portion of their aid. Students are considered to have, they earn their aid as they attend. So, and it goes by that withdrawal date or the date that they stopped attending, stopped attending, or the date that they completed an academic-related activity. What we do do is before a student can completely withdraw, whether it be online or in person in the enrollment center, the student has to come up and talk to somebody in financial aid. So we can explain this policy to them as well as how it's going to affect satisfactory academic progress standards. So the amounts of write-off per year have gone down. We dispersed in '17, '18 around seven, over a little over $7 million in federal funds. 132, I think that was the number, 132,215 is what we had to return by law. And we tried to recoup that from the students.
Right. So then in the future then, are these students in poor standing or can they like pay this off and get back in or how does that work?
Yep. Two things happen when they completely withdraw. One, they have a debt that they owe to the school that they can make arrangements on to pay. Some students that are, you know, serious about returning to school will do that. The second thing that happens is students who receive federal funding have to meet satisfactory academic progress standards. When they completely withdraw, and if that happens consistently, or if they completely withdraw and then next semester they may withdraw from one class, it affects their completion rate as well as your GPA. And because when it comes to the return to the four calculation, it's for those students that completely withdraw officially and unofficially. And those unofficial withdrawals are F grades. So it does affect them academically. Students do have the option to appeal. And that's when we get into a situation where we'll limit students, the number of credit hours they can take. Some students can't handle full-time because of other responsibilities in life. So the appeals committee will put a limit on how many credit hours they can take and try to get them an academic plan and help them be successful. So we try to put some things in place and try to keep the students well-informed of the policies that we're responsible for.
So they're getting this money from the government typically? Are there some, some that just say unpaid tuition and fees? Would that not involve a grant? It would just mean that they owe the school money?
That means they owe the school money.
Okay. And then you may not know this right offhand, but like out of the students that start on day one, how many end up, what percent don't finish?
I'm going to say.
It's okay if you don't know this, but.
If I have a calculator, if I look at the enrollment, I'm going to say we may have per year, maybe between 600 and 800 students that may go on suspension.
Out of how many that's?
Out of, I want to say maybe 2,600.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
So these, are these all Pell, Pell grant money?
These are Pell, federal and federal loans. And then there's a supplemental grant, the federal supplemental education opportunity grant, which is a small grant for students that are, that have the most need. That is part of this particular calculation as well. So it's federal student loans, federal Pell grant, as well as the federal supplemental education opportunity grant.
So does the money go from the federal government to the student and then the student uses it or supposed to use it to pay Lewis and Clark, but they don't pay Lewis and Clark? They just take the money and pocket it? And then we have to refund money that we never got?
Uh-uh.
No, I didn't think so.
The money is awarded to the student. Usually the student stops attending somewhere in a semester. Sometimes it's before they've been dispersed a refund. Sometimes it's after they've already been dispersed a refund, meaning tuition in most cases have been paid, books have been paid, and the student may have received remaining funds if they're eligible. So most of the money has been drawn down by the college and that we've had use of. It's the student's withdrawal and when they withdraw that triggers a payback at a certain percentage.
Yeah, it's money that Lewis and Clark has gotten that we're refunding back to the government.
Exactly.
Nancy, you had a comment or?
I do have a comment. I just wanted to let yous know that we don't just leave this outstanding. We have the Illinois Debt Recovery Portal that we submit these to. And so we do get funds from them. This has been going on since 2013 is my understanding. And we've received since 2013, within the last six years, $619,000. So we have been recouping some of these debts that we have been written off. Also, as Angela said, the debt has, each write-off from the past four years has gone down. Last, from last year to this year, it went up $4,000 roughly.
Who makes the rule, like how quickly you have to write these off? If you're going to collect a bunch, I mean, maybe you have to write them off? Do you have a law?
We, there is a law that you have to invoice them three or more times before you can even submit them. And then before we even write them off, we have someone sit there and check to every single student to see if they've made any payments. We don't just write them off. If they, if they're making payments, they don't get written off.
Okay, yeah, because some of these are just a year old, but, okay, that's fine.
So, so on the, the big chunk for the, for Pell grants, that money can actually, could actually potentially be collected from the students?
Potentially. It looks like we've been doing about a 41%, something like that, and getting money back. You know, the state, we turn it over to the state. So it's how, if, if the person works at the state, they might garnish their wages to get the funds. And we've gotten it back through tax returns.
Yeah, yeah. If they got a tax refund, that could be attached.
And sometimes students will make payments arrangements to pay those back themselves.
What about, are you allowed to use collection agencies or to use attorneys?
This is our collection agency.
Is what, is that what that is?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Motion has been made and seconded to approve the adjustments to accounts receivable. I call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Item H, bid information, page 53. Is there a motion to approve the bid information?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the bid information. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. These are not actual bids. These are permission to go forward with taking bids.
Any questions from anyone?
Yeah, I didn't quite understand that, Dale. These are authorizations to request bids. So why, if we're going to request bids, I would think we'd be requesting bids from multiple vendors.
Right, so.
But there's only one vendor quoted here.
Well, these are, these are, the board requested by policy that you know in advance if we're going to go to bid on something. So this is, this is asking the board to approve going forward to get bids. Typically what we do is we would go get bids and we show you the low-qualified bid, but the board policy says now that you want to, in advance, approve going to get bids. So that's what this is.
I don't know, must be looking at the wrong thing. What's that? What's that? That's the magazine, that's the magazine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion's been made and seconded for bid information. Call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon? Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Item I, contracts and purchases requiring board approval. Is there a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve, and a second to that, for contracts and purchases requiring board approval. Are there any questions?
Okay, I got a couple of questions on this. So we're asking to do a contract with E M S I for economic modeling?
Correct.
Two of them there, one for thirteen thousand five hundred, and one for thirteen thousand six fifty?
Correct.
How essential are the, are those? I know you probably can't describe this here, but it seems like a lot.
No, actually, you know, those are sort of fundamental software applications that we use to have a database for determining whether we go forward with a particular academic program or not. So let's just take welding, for example. So we would use E M Z to review our district, to see what kind of welding employers there are, what kind of jobs there are, what kind of career paths there are, there are. We use our institutional research people to do that, in collaboration with, with E M Z. And so that, those are subscriptions for that purpose. And, and we have to have that kind of data before we can go forward to I C C B, you know, to approve a new program.
How about the Career Coach website? What's, what's that?
Somebody probably knows that better than me here. Come to the mic if you will.
That is a site on our, within our website, and it links to labor information for students that are looking for work. They can look at Career Coach, find out what type of demand there is for different occupations, what those jobs pay, how many openings there are, where those jobs may be located. It really gives them a better idea of what they're doing when they're planning their careers, when they're looking at job options after graduation. And that's open to both students and the public. Anybody can go to it.
Yeah, when it says customized, does that mean to our area?
Yes, to both the Lewis and Clark district and the St. Louis metro area.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and then the other question I have is about the Elm Street housing. Elm Street student housing, full scholarship, half scholarship leases, in some combination to equal thirty-six full scholarships. So we're paying to have kids live in the apartment there? Is that what's...
Yeah, and Dr. Sean Hill's here, so he might want to address that.
That is correct. So the N J C A A allows community colleges to pay for student housing. So just like with the N C A A, the N J C A A, the National Junior College Athletic Association, has Division One, Division Two, and Division Three. And Division One athletes are allowed to receive a housing stipend, a housing scholarship, a meal stipend, and also have a tuition payment.
So do we pay that whole amount whether the apartment is occupied or not? Do, or do we, I mean, do we commit to renting however many, one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars worth of apartments? Or do we, like, reimburse one student for an apartment?
Sure. The way it works, the contracts which are in the board book, they're for, they're basically for beds in the apartment, so you're really paying for a specific student. So it's thirty-six scholarships in total, which may be split up halves or full, depending on the student. So those are all fully funded and occupied by a student.
Okay, so we, there's no question about them being empty, we're using them. And then tell me something about the demographics of the person, like, are these people that live in our district and they're just living here while they're doing athletics? Or what, why do they need housing?
Part of it's convenience, part of it's having a college-like atmosphere, and, you know, a university-type experience. Some of the students are, live in the area, some of the students live in Missouri, like, maybe St. Charles, St. Louis. Some students are also from other states, and other students from other countries. We've had students from Canada, Mexico, Japan, Sweden, England, France, Colombia, several different countries.
It, it seems odd to me that they would come all the way here to, I mean, how did they get here? Why did they pick Lewis and Clark? Are they playing a specific sport that is hard to play in Sweden, or?
Sure. I mean, part of it's the American dream, and so people come here for that. And the other thing that Lewis and Clark has going forward, which is similar to what S I U E has going forward, is that we're one of the safest places to go. And so, besides that, we also have four-year university coaches who will tell our coaches that, hey, we trust you to groom and to coach this particular person, so we'd like this person to come to Lewis and Clark for two years, and then they'll go to like a place like LSU to finish off their education. Our coaches don't go around the world recruiting.
I hope not.
When you win national championships, they come to us.
And who decides who gets housing? Because there's only, only thirty-six spots. Who decides who gets that and who doesn't?
So part of that's based on our designation in terms of division. And the coaches, the sports that get housing scholarships, to be clear, are men's basketball and then men's and women's soccer. Those are Division One sports that get housing scholarships. And the coaches decide, based on their needs, and, you know, who they think is the best player, who gets the scholarship.
Division, Division One sports are the housing division. And, you know, we're not unusual in this respect. Virtually every team we play would have a similar profile.
Yeah.
I have one question. Who, or what entity actually owns Elm Street Housing?
Actually, Elm Street Housing is the L L C name. The person who owns it is named Kevin Karski. Who's right there.
He's, he's with us tonight. What was your last name again?
Karski. C A R S K I.
Okay, and then this last one I find very interesting on the Intera Incorporated. Says, identify, evaluate, rank, and recommend long-term options to obtain river water for mesocosms. Now, I saw mesocosm when I was there, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, but it seems really steep that we'd pay twenty thousand dollars to go get river water. But I'm guessing they have to be really, it has to be really unique river water. We don't have enough river water, so we have to go out and buy twenty thousand dollars of river water.
Ted Krachmer. Yeah, Ted Krachmer, I manage a field station in Engrac. Sorry, I missed you when you were at the, visiting. So our mesocosm facility was built in two thousand and fourteen. What we did at that time was, we worked with Dynegy, or, yeah, Dynegy Power Plant, just downstream. They brought about four hundred million gallons of river water into their plant to cool the plant, and they had extra pumping capacity. So we partnered with them to put our own pump in that plant. We ran for our river water, our mesocosm facility, which you learned about, experimental raceways, where we can do studies on fish, other organisms, that we can't do in the river for a variety of reasons. We put our pump in there, in their system, it saved us quite a bit of money in the construction of that facility, rather than creating our own pumping system. Recently, they have canceled our easement for that pump, because the plant has been decommissioned, and is shutting down, it'll be torn down completely. And Intera is a company that has a long history of working with groups like ours, and, for instance, power plants that draw water from the river to run pumping systems like this, and they'll help us. The idea is to help us come up with alternatives that may be viable and economically feasible to get our, to get our water from the river in a sustainable way.
It just, capitalism is great, isn't it? That somebody, a company can be out there that goes out and gets river water and charges twenty thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, so...
I know, there's more to it than that.
Yeah, certainly. Certainly. It's, it's not as if they're charging us for the water. There's plenty of water, but it's the way we get the water. It's, it's just, you can't just throw a hose in there and, and siphon it up, unfortunately. So, thank you.
The Dynegy plant closing will force us to find a more permanent solution for how we...
That's right.
...put that water in there, which will be...
That's right.
Hopefully paid for by the same grant source that this one is.
Ted?
Yes.
The, the way you get that water will have to be approved by the Corps?
That's right. There's a, right. So part of the reason of having a consultant, aside from the engineering of a, of a system like that, is the permitting process is rigorous. The, the area right in front of our field station there is part of the navigation channel, so barges nose up to that, to that levee constantly. You don't see any there now because the river's closed, but constantly there are barges there. So you can't just build a structure and just have it there. It's, there's a long permitting process, both with EPA, Corps of Engineers, and the Coast Guard, all of which is quite technical.
So, son, what I'm trying to press upon, we're just not going to get some river water. There's a lot to that. You're dealing with about three or four different agencies of the federal government. So we have to have a plan, and it has to be approved by all those agencies. So that's why you need to pay somebody that kind of money to work that, work through that. And also, on your database, your information here, customized software programming for our district or whatever, through my work experience, our company, that's not expensive. I'm looking at software right now, I'd love to pay that. Yeah, I'm not, it's, that's a, that's not, that's a good deal.
Well, I'm not sure how to ask this question exactly, but I know we've, we've had a, a long-term relationship with A A I C, the architects, and I just kind of wondered how long that's relationship has existed, and I see this, this is just for the master planning activities. Of course, there's other things that they do on, you know, they get reimbursed for projects that they work on, right? But this, is this master plan, like, is, is it updated every year, like, every five years, or is it just rotational?
Well, so to answer your question, we've had a very long-term relationship with this architectural group. They have to, when we come up with particular projects, you know, C D B projects, for example, capital development award projects, they compete for those projects. So it's not like we have a, you know, so they, they, they have to compete for those projects at the state level. And then, but then we, but then we do have to have someone who's looking at, you know, kind of the, the bigger picture in terms of engineering, architectural kind of issues. If we're going to put a welding building, where's it go? What's all the, kind of the framing of all that, of all that, in terms of...
And it helps to have somebody that's been on the scene for a number of years, to know where things are.
So I was just going to add to that.
A lot of institutional knowledge, you know, yeah.
Sorry. One of the documents, one of the action items tonight is approval of our resource allocation management plan, which is something we work closely with them on. I mean, just day-to-day, their guidance, when we come to some of our H VAC issues on our older buildings, because we've had this long relationship with them, they know our buildings, they know the complex issues that we face with some of the historical structures specifically, so...
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question regarding the Elm Street student housing. Apparently, these apartments are occupied solely by athletes. I'd like to know, what's the average hours that they attend school in a week? And do, are they obligated to pay any part of their rental?
So...
Dr. Sean Hill again?
A couple of parts to that question. One, it's not all student athletes who live in that structure. There are other students live there as well, and most of the students who live in that structure pay on their own. In order to be a student athlete, you have to carry a certain number of credit hours and be a full-time student. So they are full-time students, the student athletes, because they can't play whatever sport they want to play unless they're full-time. So they're carrying at least twelve credit hours.
In terms of their student capability academically, they compete with non-athletes in terms of...
Yes, they do slightly better than students who are non-athletes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Motion has been made to approve the contracts and purchases requiring board approval. Call for the vote. Item I.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Item J, contract change orders, insurance renewals, asset disposal. A motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Made and seconded. Is there a discussion? Page fifty-six.
Well, it's not really a question or anything, but I just kind of, I'm just kind of thinking that this, this is an area where we really need to focus on looking at, getting the value, getting, make sure, making sure this is a good value. I can, I've been told that print advertising is kind of not really very cost-effective, for example.
I think we already passed that.
So...
I think we already passed.
Yeah.
Yeah. You got to be a fifty-six one. Yeah, okay. All right.
Never mind.
Any other comments? Motion has been made to approve the contract change orders, insurance renewals, asset disposal, page fifty-six. Call for the vote?
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, item... That's the contract, no? Yeah, page fifty.
Personnel.
Okay, personnel. Is there a motion to approve personnel?
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the personnel on pages three through three B. Any discussion? No discussion? Call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Item L, need a motion for gifts to receive, page four.
Mentioned that gift is a thirteen-L diesel engine, Atlantic Engineering, Columbus, Indiana, donated, that's valued at three thousand dollars, and one of our faculty members, Chris Reynolds, went to pick it up.
Any discussion? Oh, I'm, okay. Need a motion to approve the gift? Okay. Okay, have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion to approve and a second to approve the gifts to receive. Any dis, any further discussion or any discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Tzogetsky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Move on now to informational items. Awarded grants and sponsored contracts.
Right, so these next series of information items are designed to conform with the new board policies, and so what you see on page five and 5A are grants that are existing with funds in place. So five and 5A.
Okay.
Uh, there's, you know, and, so any comments, you know, can go to. Pending grants for sponsored contracts, page six. These are grants submitted, awaiting notification.
So are any of those in the budget on page six?
We're waiting notification, so if they're awarded already, uh, yeah, go ahead Nancy.
If they're continuous grants and we thought we were going to get them, then we probably have put them in the budget.
Uh-huh, so you usually have a pretty good idea whether you're going to get them or not.
Most of them, yes. If they're continuous, we, we're pretty sure we're going to get them.
Like in the case of the East St. Louis grant, you know, we've been notified by the state that that, that's going to happen. Other ones are new.
Yeah, there's a couple of big ones there for 1.2 million, 1 million, 2.9 million.
Right, on the 1.25 million, the U.S. Department of Energy, that's in the final stages of negotiation. So we know we're going to get that one. It's new.
Yes. And those, like that next one, are, where, where's that, are those going to INGREG or where?
Yeah, National Science Foundation, 1 million plus is to Dr. Tony Dell. And National Science Foundation, that's new, pending notification.
Okay, and then the, also the 2 million and the 2 million?
Right, so those are in the state budget, and one is to INGREG and one is to IGEN. And those are new and we're, and we're pretty confident we're going to get those.
And those are in the budget, aren't they?
In the budget, right. And in the case of INGREG, in the budget, in the case of IGEN, we're the fiscal agent, so it's in the budget, right Nancy, so, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you know if any of those require matching?
None, neither requires matching.
Okay, good.
Anything else? Announcements or acknowledgement of grants, sponsored contracts, et cetera, et cetera?
I think we're down to staff presentations, and we have it in order here that the, we do the tentative budget next, Mr. Chair.
Fiscal year 2020 tentative budget.
Thank you very much. This year, the 2020 tentative budget is an incredibly exciting fiscal roadmap for our immediate future. For a college that has a history of accomplishment in teaching and learning programs, economic development, and in service to the people of our district, our region, and our state, our future is very bright. This year, we end our fiscal '19 budget with revenues exceeding expenditures. Once again, the faculty and staff did an incredible job, the administrative cabinet, finance department, remarkable job in staying on budget and responding to challenges of state funding and enrollment, while at the same time working within our established budget for fiscal '19. As to the tentative budget for tonight, fiscal '20, all of us, particularly Nancy Kaiser, you've heard from tonight, Mary Schulte, you've heard from previous meetings, the entire cabinet had worked very hard to construct Lewis and Clark's fiscal '20 budget. We start in January, and, you know, we have intense conversations. It appears, as of this writing, that the state portion of the budget will be coming forth with a slight modest increase. We're budgeting 2% increase over fiscal '19 actual allocation. Lewis and Clark's budget is fiscally responsible and accountable, while at the same time allowing for targeted growth in funding several replacement full-time faculty positions in the following areas, nursing, art, architecture, and two faculty positions in biology. Fiscal '20 budget, operating budget philosophically continues to be a bottom-up process, where everybody's involved in the process. Every division is asked to figure out how to put together maintenance and priority budgets where they do more with less and keep the quality very high. This year, the priority budget is pretty much limited to the Carl Perkins grants and the technology requirements. Fiscal '20 tentative budget also enables the college to continue to grow, while at the same time maintaining the quality programs we already have in place, including continuing the retention strategy that's been so successful from the Student Success Center. Total operating budget for 2020 is in excess of 32.6 million, represents a 2.7% decrease, another indication of fiscal discipline. Fiscal '20 budget places special emphasis on lowering operating costs for campus utilities and maintaining reliability. This year, I want to emphasize that the faculty and staff has done an amazing job in securing grants and contracts, as you've heard tonight. In addition to the 32.6 million, there's another, almost 10 million, 9.9 million in competitive grants and contracts to fund services and innovation and research, instruction, expansion, quality that also lifts the burden off our area taxpayers. The most striking impact in the fiscal '20 budget occurred very late in the state legislative session. Lewis and Clark will receive an increase in, in operations, as I mentioned, at 2%. But also, if you look on page 15, Lewis and Clark has allocated in the capital bill $41,925,000, the single largest appropriation in nearly 50 years' history of our college. Even more exciting, 37.5 million of that grant, it requires no local tax money and no local college money, it's an actual grant, 37.5 million, for the purpose of completely restoring and bringing into code compliance the historic circa 1890 Theodore Link Main Complex building. This is one of the most important historic buildings in the state of Illinois. Thank you, thank you. One of the most important historic buildings in the state of Illinois, it's a Theodore Link building, it was predating Union Station over in St. Louis, and one of the most important buildings in the entire Midwest. Additionally, funds will, will be allocated for, to restore and construct other projects, daycare center, greenhouse, and other capital projects. One caveat is that, you know, the money, difficult to get in the budget, it's also difficult to get it released, so we have to get the money released, and it may take the better part of a half a year or more to do that. Highlights in addition to what I've mentioned, we continue to do self-insured group health and dental insurance, unfortunately, there'll be increases to both the college and employees, but we're also adding an HSA option for employees. Salary increases of 3% for every full-time staff employee group. A three-year phased-in HR compensation study done by Arthur Gallagher, recommended over a three-year period of phase-in. Additional funding to respond to the minimum wage requirements. Furniture for Riverbend Arena. Total operating budget's 32.6 in revenues, an increase in the state funding from 14% to 19%. 39% comes from the college district, 31% from tuition fees. More than half of the budget, 59.4%, is in direct support of instruction, academic support and services, as compared to 55.6% last year. Operation and maintenance is 19% in this budget compared to 18% in last year. Interfund transfers are low, and total salaries remains in a very healthy range of 63%, up slightly from 60% in '19. With that, I present to you the tentative budget.
Thank you.
Questions of me, or Nancy will join me, and we can talk that through.
Any questions on the budget?
Okay, Nancy, I, I hope you can help me with this. It has to do with interfund transfers. So, one of the things that's been said in the last couple of meetings is that we don't issue bonds for operating funds. But to me, we're transferring money to the operating accounts, the education fund for technology, and that technology money, like, for example, we have 1.6 million that's coming into the education fund from those bonds. So to me, that's operating money. You understand my question?
I do. And we fund, I'm not sure how many people, through the Ed Fund, because that's where those individuals, I know I'm not saying this right.
So are they structured in the college's organizational chart?
Right. And so we're moving funds in there to help pay for those. So you are correct.
I think the caveat on, you know, whether we're using bond funds to, you know, pay for operating would be that the tech fund is the one exception.
Yes, I'm, I'm concerned, because you guys have warned me that those funds are going to run out in, what, two years?
Two or three, depending how we, you know.
So I'm afraid we're going to have to do another bond issuance and take on more debt just to pay for these operating costs.
And so I think that, you know, this won't impact the fiscal '20 budget, but I, but I think of it, I've said to the board before that we should have a discussion, you know, looking at our bonded indebtedness and how, how to go about restructuring that and saving the taxpayers some money, and I think there, there are techniques that we can have, but it's a longer conversation, and I think that's on the, on the front burner to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I, just an observation, I guess, and I know for a guy like you with a lot of drive and, and energy and forward-looking in that, this is, that's not easy to think along these lines, but Lewis and Clark is not necessarily really growing. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but we, we kind of have, maybe have to change our line of thinking a little bit. Just an observation.
We had 18 years of consecutive enrollment growth, and as the state's population peaked and as our district's population peaked, then our, our enrollment did, did peak, and it's actually gone, gone down, as you've pointed out. And I, I probably get, you know, that, we want to stay competitive, and so our major capital project was to take care of the facilities we have, not to build new facilities. So I think I'm in tune.
Speaking of that one, that, that 37.5 million dollar project, and it was interesting, I noted that when it was in the ramp, in ramp last year, it called for a large local tax contribution, but now it turns out that there's going to be no local contributions.
Yeah, it was, it was a lesser amount last time too, because of the inflation factor, but we're just really fortunate that in all of the process that goes on, we were able to shift this to where we didn't have a local match.
Kevin, one of the things that affects a college enrollment is economy. And we have full, I call it full employment right now, lowest employment rate in 49 years. So people are working rather than going to school. And if you have a dip in the economy, you'll see the enrollment rise, because people go on to school to get some kind of a career path that they need help with. So, part of the, part of the reason where our enrollment dipped is the economy, thinking we have no control over it.
And I, I think that, you know, it doesn't mean we can't grow, it just means we have to grow in areas where we can really employ people. So diesel mechanics, you know, diesel technology, welding, things like that, where people can get jobs.
Just, just one other observation on the human resource study done by Gallagher. Have, did I miss it, or have, did we have a presentation on that, or are we going to it? It's kind of like it's worded as a done deal, but.
It's, it's coming up, you know, Gallagher's coming in on the 25th, I think it is, or? And there should be an invitation to, to engage with Gallagher on the, on the 25th, and I think it's $190,000 in this budget for that purpose, and it's over a three-year period.
Okay, I got another question. So, on page 15 is what I'm looking at, in the Operations Building and Maintenance Fund, which is a restricted fund. We're getting 3.7 million there at the bottom is being transferred in to cover whatever's being used out of that, where does that come?
That's not a transfer in, that's using the fund balance. The transfer in is above it, the 888,000.
Okay, so even though it says transfer, it's not really a transfer?
No, it's.
So that's kind of.
Transfer from fund balance, so it's using the fund balance.
Okay, so we could say then that's the beginning balance then, right? Is that what that?
No, that isn't the beginning balance.
No, it's just something to make it balance. We're pulling it out of the beginning balance to make it balance.
Right, the beginning balance right now in the Operations and Maintenance Fund is on the first page, and it's $12,396,000.
Okay, well, that's why I couldn't figure out where that, that number came from, that makes sense.
That, that's the number to make the, to the two, the expenses and the revenues match.
Okay, all right, thank you for explaining that. And then on page 16 is where Dr. Chapman mentioned they're all the capital outlays we're planning on making. I see some of those say like Montessori, CDB, and match, additional funds, local engineering annex, annex. It's got, three of them have the word "match" in it. Where do those matches come from, and have we already received them?
Yeah, so, so some of these projects are held over from last year's appropriation, and they do require a match, and we have been holding those funds out of existing bond funds to match, to the match. So those, those are restricted for that purpose.
And just, just to be clear, a lot of this we didn't receive last week, so that's why I got, I have questions this week on any of these other funds we didn't have that.
Correct.
So, and now I'm looking at page 24 and 25. So this lists the Restricted Purposes Fund, and it basically has all the grant monies going in and out, right? There are a couple of big ones, there's no grant money coming in.
Those are the technology ones? Does it say tech plans? That's because those were the bond issues that had been issued?
Yes.
And so there's no money coming in at this point in time.
So it looks like in expenditures, we're going to spend 3.8 million on technology, and we have it broken out between two different categories, between academic support, 1.8 million, and then institutional support is technology plan, that's 1.9 million. Can you tell me how that breakout, how do you determine what goes where there?
Well, I think Mary and Jeff worked together to determine what priorities they had as far as what's going to be used in the academic area, and then the support staff is considered the institutional.
So from his presentation last week, it sounded like most of these expenses are like contracts, you know, with people, software contracts, right? I don't recall all of them, but is that what generally most of this money is used for?
Do you want to comment, Jeff, or?
It does depend on the purpose of the software, in the case of the Lucian, that's mostly administrative side, not academic side. When it comes to like the career services, where that's really geared towards students, when it's geared towards students and faculty, that's going to be more geared to the academic side. So there's expenditures from both sides and different accounts for that.
Does any of that money, like in the institutional support, is that used for any of the grant activities?
No, it wouldn't be used for anything in a grant.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we're basically spending 3.8 million out of those bond funds, and so when those bond funds dry up, that's what we're going to have to find, we're going to find 3.8 million a year to pay for this, is it? Am I looking at that right?
That is the current expenditure, yes.
And it's not like these are, like, computers we'll buy, we're buying, some, some are, I know, but what I'm trying to get at, it's, it's annual expenses that we're paying here, not like investing in, you know, a mainframe computer, something like we used to have.
Commendations for software platforms. Commendations for software platforms, things like that.
Right.
Okay, well, I just wanted to point that out because that's an area of concern that I have, and you expressed it last week, you know, we need to find money for that in the future, so.
Right.
I'm concerned about that. And then there's also another line item with no corresponding source, and that's the INGREG amount. So we've got $325,000 in there with no funding, so it comes out of the college's restricted fund, is that right?
That's right.
Yes, those are not normally annual-type expenditures, though. As I remember it, anyway.
So Nancy, can you respond to that? I mean, basically, that's the uncovered part of INGREG, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's, you know, we get $2 million, and so that's, so we've moved that down to about 300. And Dr. Gary Roth's going to make a presentation in a second, so he can explain that more than you do.
So hopefully, the goal there is to limit the college resources that are used for that? Because that's right out of the taxpayer's pocket, right?
Dr. Roth will give a full explanation on that.
So the other thing I see on this is that at the bottom, there are inter-fund transfers again. And so we're taking 564,000 and 1.6 million and transferring it to the education fund for operating, right?
For the tech plans, that's correct. And also, the other, the 564,000 is actually generated from grants. That is indirect cost that the grants produce that helps the institution pay for utilities and different other items.
Yeah, I was wondering where that was, because I knew that you guys say that in, when we get all these grants, that we get money to administer them. So is that all of it, or is it some of it, or, I mean, can you say that?
Well, that's an estimate based on the number of grants. So those grants that were submitted for 2.9 million, if we get that grant, and usually they write in the 37%, we would get 37% of that to be able to help the institution.
Of the direct cost, yeah.
So we could make the statement that because we get all these grants, the college gets $564,000 to administer the grants? Could we safely say that?
Right.
You're estimating it?
We're estimating it, it just depends on the number of grants and the indirect costs. The indirect cost rates vary from grant to grant. Some are 8%, I've had them at 5%. We have One Night Now at 37%, and quite a bit of the INGREG ones are at 16%.
And I noticed a couple of other ones aren't funded, like, maybe they are. The Federal Work Study, it didn't really, you know, like, it didn't look in and out, but maybe it is. It's a combination of a couple of them.
It's in and out. If you, I think within my transfer, we get an administrative fee for that, too, and that's included in that number.
And then College for Life, looks like we spent 205 on that, but we only have 127 in revenue. Where do we get money for that?
Well, that's the transfer in that we have to help them with. That's an unfunded commitment that we've made.
So I forget, who does the revenue come from on that?
For College for Life, it's students pay a fee.
Students, like...
The College for Life students.
They pay a fee to be in it? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Dr. Lynn, do you want to explain that?
The College for Life.
Okay.
Okay, so the 127 comes from fees? Okay.
You remember, the College for Life program is a program that serves adults with cognitive disabilities. And so they do pay a fee.
Okay.
And some of them are sponsored by agencies, others have parents who are able. But Nancy's right, it takes a transfer and...
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, thank you. I guess we're ready for Gary to present.
On the tentative budget, or... Okay, thanks. So I guess next will be Dr. Gary Roth from the National Great Rivers Research and Education Center, and he was asked by the board for a presentation, so we're responding to the board's request.
Good evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about National Great Rivers. I've spoken to the board before about our program, but it's been some time, and so it's kind of exciting to have the opportunity to tell you about the kinds of programs that we have. Since all of you don't know me, I'll give you just a 30-second background. I am a University of Illinois graduate, I received my PhD in ecology, went on to the faculty at the U of I as a professor and researcher and educator, went on to become department head of two different departments, and also served as the associate director of what was the Ag Experiment Station, which is now the Office of Research for the College of ACES. So with that as background, that I'll use to set the stage for where I'd like to go with this presentation. My last administrative role at the university was that of head of the Department of Natural Resources and Environmental Sciences. That was a new department that we created at the university. It was an aggregation of multiple smaller departments that came together, ended up creating a department which was one of the top five or six departments in the whole university. But we created an entity that not, had not previously been in the college, and so I was giving a lot of thought to how we accommodated natural resource issues in a traditional college of agriculture. We had a lot of field stations around the state focused on ag, but we didn't have any opportunity to focus on natural resources. The state budget was in the same shape that it's been in off and on for the last 20 years, and there was not state money available to look into creating a facility. So I attempted to raise private money to do that and made a lot of contacts in this area because I felt that the key issues that we wanted to address related to freshwater systems, these large rivers, the Mississippi, the watersheds that feed those rivers, and the people that live within those watersheds. And so this was a perfect place to have a research, education, and outreach facility. So I was working in the area with private donors, made a lot of contacts, and approached Dr. Chapman at the community college, and essentially began talking with him about the opportunity for a research, education, and outreach facility. That was some 20 years ago, and what we found was that we had a lot of common ground and a lot of common goals. And so I'm going to be brief, but I'd like to address some of the common goals that we found to illustrate what National Great Rivers is all about, and to illustrate the interconnection between National Great Rivers and Lewis and Clark Community College. So in the first instance, I want to start with a primary agreement that we had as we sought to build this program. And that agreement centered around the need to create something that was unique. My experience at the University of Illinois, I was a researcher, I administered research in a variety of ways. There were probably 200 or 300 water-related projects at the U of I alone, not to mention the number of projects at SIU, at Wash U, at St. Louis University, a lot of work going on. But what I observed, and what Dr. Chapman had observed in his previous history as a research administrator, was that it sometimes takes a long time to get that research into practice, to get it on the ground so that you can actually have an impact on the problem you're trying to solve. And it takes an even longer time to get it into the policy arena so that the overall policy involving freshwater or watershed can come into effect. It just takes a long time. So we both agreed that we wanted to create a model for National Great Rivers that was, in fact, unique. And the essence of that model was to shorten the time between good science and good management that's implemented on the ground. And so that has been our working model, and it continues to be, and it truly sets us apart from other institutions that do research. I can tell you for sure that at the University of Illinois, there was no significant emphasis on taking your individual research into the management or policy arena. But that's exactly the opposite to what we do at INGREG. We set out to take our science into the public arena, into the policy arena, and we've been pretty successful at that. I'll just take a second to give you one example, which I think is relevant. I could give you others, but I think this one makes the most sense. We have a program that we called our Land Stewardship Program, and it's basically a program that works with private landowners to help them do a better job of managing their lands. So what we did is we took our current science on soil loss, water quality issues, nitrogen, phosphorus, you know, we have a huge nutrient loading problem in the river, in the Gulf of Mexico. It's impacting the river, it's impacting everyone in this room. We all depend on the river. So we took our current science and put it into a package that our folks could take into the field, work with private landowners, and help them to develop a better management plan on their individual farms or their individual land. Along with that, one of the problems that landowners have, and in the past, I've worked with a lot of private landowners in the forester era, one of the problems they have is being able to find out what programs are available, how to apply for those programs, and how to put it into practice. So effectively, our program takes our current science, it takes all of the programs available to landowners, and creates kind of a one-stop shop. It educates landowners about the issues surrounding soil loss, nutrient loss, and aggregates that with programs that are available to them to financially assist them in solving these land use problems. We work a lot in the Lewis and Clark District. We probably have 12,000 acres or more of land where we've worked with landowners to create better management plans for those lands. We also work in surrounding counties to the district as well. But I think this illustrates the concept that I'm trying to make, that, you know, we do set ourselves apart from other research field stations, from the University of Illinois, from other institutions. You know, we don't want to compete with them, we want to complement them and do something better that helps get science into practice. So that was one of our agreements, and we're really quite proud of that achievement. I think National Great Rivers is clearly viewed as a leader in being able to accomplish that. And, you know, you automatically think that the University of Illinois, with its Cooperative Extension Service, would do that, and historically, that's true. If you thought about the establishment of a land-grant institution like the U of I, when it was established, it had three goals. One of them was to provide a good, low-cost education for students of Illinois. The other two were to aid business and to aid agriculture. And for 100 years or more, Cooperative Extension, when it came into practice, did a wonderful job of doing that. But over time, Cooperative Extension has kind of lost touch with these actual issues. And so in that case, we've picked up the slack to move more aggressively to help the people of the community college district and to help the people of the state be able to put practices into effect on their land and begin to solve this nutrient and soil loss problem. So one area of agreement. A second area that we agreed on, and we talked about this a lot, and this process didn't take one day, I'm talking about a development process that took two or three years. A second point of agreement was that it was really pointless to create something like this if it didn't provide feedback to the community college. Obviously, as department head at the University of Illinois, I wanted to solve the problem of trying to create this kind of an entity that speeded up the process of science to management. But as a community college, Dr. Chapman wanted to be sure that we were contributing to the college as a whole. And it would be easy for me to say, well, sure we would, because we'll enrich the whole experience for students, but that's not very factual. You've got to look at it in more detail. And so we have, over the years, as we've developed National Great Rivers, we've done that by also taking into account the needs of students on campus. So over the last 15 years or so that we've been active, we've been instrumental in developing six different curricula areas, two of which lead to degrees, four of which lead to certificates. Restoration Ecology is a good example of that, we've got 40 students in that. Our staff at the field station work with the professor that teaches that program, Scott Moss, and we work with those students quite extensively. So, you know, we want to be able to be in a position where we can assist, and one way is through development of programs that are relevant to today's needs, where Lewis and Clark can educate students to go into careers that relate to natural resources. So those six programs do that. Additionally, we hire students at the field station, we mentor students at the field station, we teach courses on campus. We also developed the first dual-transfer program that was in existence with the University of Illinois and Lewis and Clark Community College. And that program was with my department, Natural Resources and Environmental Sciences. And of course, that allows a student to be guaranteed admission to the University of Illinois once they've completed their two-year program here and taken a prescribed set of courses. So, you know, I think that's been an important contribution since the initial program was developed. We now have multiple dual-transfer programs, not only with the U of I, but with other institutions, and that's quite important for a community college. I spoke to a couple of you the other day, and I told my own experience, I grew up in southern Illinois in a little town, Metropolis, in a farm family, and my dad, we were poor. My dad had different jobs, worked as a truck driver, worked as a farmer, worked as a commercial fisherman. And I wanted to go to college, and, you know, my grades were good, and I had the initiative, but I didn't think I'd be able to go. And so I applied and was accepted at Paducah Junior College, which they called them junior colleges at that point, but we've moved a long way past that. And I was all set to go there, but fortunately, I got a couple scholarships to the U of I that really helped me. I worked 30 or 40 hours a week to make it through, but we all did that, so, and it was a good experience. But my point is, is that through those kind of experiences and through our discussions, we wanted to be sure that we were contributing back to the college. It's pointless to have some freestanding entity down there on the river that doesn't contribute to this program. That's kind of integral to what we do. And likewise, in addition to that, I think we've recognized that there's an evolution going on in community colleges around the country and in this state, where they're beginning to address other issues that face folks that live within their districts. You know, that may be a health initiative, it might be a social initiative, it might be an economic development issue, or it might be an environmental or natural resource issue like we're doing. So we contribute to that as well through our local programming, our environmental education programming, there's an extensive list of the kinds of local and school programming that we do to give back to the community, and we pride ourselves on doing that.
Just leave a little time for questions, Gary.
Yeah, I got wound up here. And let me also say, one other point of agreement that we've consistently had is that neither Dale or I believe that we should be a drain on the college, and so our goal has always been to be budget-neutral. And we've become pretty close to that. So your question about the 325, our budget is 2.325 this current year, but we would hope that we can draw that down so that it's a lot smaller than that, and that's what we fully expect to do. I would say, though, that I would advocate for some contribution to this program because we truly, and I'm not speaking for myself... we truly, and I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking for our group, we have a wonderful program that's internationally known and connected to people all around this state, all around the district, all around the country, and it's a, it's a very good program. So the community college, keeping its oar in the water, so to speak, I believe is really important. But we do have a goal of being budget neutral. So I'll, I'll stop with that.
Of course, of course, I have questions, okay? Some of them I know the answer to, but I just want to hear you say it in this form.
Sure.
So you talked about a, a program to help landowners. Do you know how many landowners you assisted?
Overall?
Yeah, I mean, like, in a year, what's an average? I mean, you talk to two or 10 or?
Oh, no.
Hundreds?
In the hundreds, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Over the 20-year period?
Well, over the last few years and over not only the counties in the district, but the surrounding counties that are high priority areas, it's in the hundreds.
Got another, more technical.
Mr. Johnson, we have been working on the conservation area for, presumably, our 10 years, for a great amount of the last 10 years, but currently are passing here, assisting lenders, you know, like, uh, the state.
Okay. That gives me some idea. Um, I remember, um, I grew up on a farm and still have family farms or whatever, and the USDA, um, was involved in, like, soil conservation, and they regulated how you made a ditch and, you know, told you how to build a pond and all that kind. Have they just fallen out of the picture, or is this duplicating what they do? Are they asking you to do what they want to do, or?
They're, essentially, we're funded through, um, those agencies. IDNR, for example, has funding to do certain activities related to wildlife. NRCS has funding related to soil. And both of those agencies fund us to, uh, do this program because they're not positioned to do it. Plus, we have the added benefit of being able to bring immediate relevant science into that education and landowner process, which they do not have. So, uh, we're really a supplement to what they do.
And you, you talked about, um, you had six programs that you set up here.
Yes.
Do you know how many students, uh, for example, are in that program this year, those programs?
No.
I don't need to know exactly, but like, generally, 10, 100?
No, I, I think in the six programs, there's, uh, probably between 100 and 200 students.
Dr. Swinski, uh?
I think we asked that at our meeting the other day.
It's really hard to track because some are overlapping with what those are environmental science students, one of them is straight biology students, there's a lot of overlap. But pure in restoration ecology and, uh, pathway, probably submarginally 45 or 65 students in, uh, overgrowing.
How many transfer to U of I?
That's a, that's a small handful. Our students have a trouble, have a problem with self-confidence, they don't see themselves as U of I students, and it's really hard to lift those aspirations. Getting them some experience through our internships, through working with scientists gives them a little bit more courage to transfer.
See, I, I want to emphasize that, that I, you know, I think that's what we add to the mix by creating an environment where students feel empowered to be able to have that aspiration to go on to the U of I. And we work hard at that. I, I think that's really important.
And a lot of our students go to work, you know, after they get their, you know, the associate's degree, and they're, they're employed. And geography plays the most important role about where students transfer, so a lot of them are going to go to SIUE.
So, uh, the people that are working there now, are, are they Lewis and Clark employees then, or are they U of I employees, or a mixture, or?
Everybody that works at the field station is a Lewis and Clark employee in one way or another.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then are they full-time, or they work at U of I too, or I don't know how all that works?
We have no one that, um, that currently works at the U of I.
Uh-huh. Okay. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, got a little different direction here, Gary. Uh, you're obviously a central figure out there at the, uh, at the field, uh, Field Center. Do you feel comfortable that you have a good succession plan in mind?
Well, we've, um, been working in the last couple of years to, uh, sort of reaffirm our strategic planning process, and part of that plan is a succession plan because, you know, the goal is that over the next three to five years, that, uh, actually, all of our leadership, uh, except for Dr. Swinski, uh, would probably be, um, interested in moving on to something else. So we do have that succession plan developed, and we would like to have a, uh, permanent, full-time director for the program. And, you know, my goal has been to get it to the point where it can be self-sustaining, uh, it can be what we believe it can be, which is an important resource for the district, for the state, for the country, and, um, find somebody that we could collectively find somebody that could then, uh, lead that into the future. I mean, it's not going to be me. There's no doubt about that, because I've already spent a lot more time on this than I originally thought I would. But on the other hand, it's the most rewarding, I, I'd have to say it's the most rewarding part of my career in the sense of actually feeling that I've made a real difference. Uh, and I think our program makes a real difference, and so that, that makes me proud of it.
Could, could the people?
This is a completely different direction, but do you know, um, offhand, how much debt we have in the books for when we built that? How much, like, what year we built it and if we still have debt on the books for that?
No, it, it came into form of, uh, a major grant from the state, capital grant. Uh, it was built in two phases, and then some of our bond money, you know, was used as a second phase. And I can get those numbers for you. And there's no, there's no current debt.
Like, million, 2 million, 5 million?
Uh, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to get that number to you.
What year was it built?
There's two pha, do you?
Two different.
2014?
2010.
2010, 2014. First, there were some federal grants that, uh, program grants. We, we operated without a building for a long time, and then we were able to get a state appropriation, and then we added to that with some bond funds. And there's no debt on the building.
So the, uh, the capital money that came from the state is probably on the order of about 20 million that went into the facility, uh, in two different batches.
I'll get you the correct numbers.
Okay, and then I just wanted to, I'm just trying to think about, you know, how justify all this in big picture or whatever, because the college does own the building, and so they are contributing in that way, and they're paying, you know, custodial landscaping and all that. That's probably not factored in your numbers, right? So that?
Actually, you know, some of the indirect cost money you looked at earlier.
Okay.
Would be unit cost assigned to the cost of that building, because they bring it in.
I just got a, um, a, um, cost estimate on what it actually costs to maintain that building and the grounds and the whole complex, and that's about 268,000. Uh, but our indirect cost yield currently is on the order of about 170. And then we have other, other funds that come to Engrake that are held in the college too. So I would say, right now, you know, we're not budget neutral on that, but we do contribute probably 200,000 of the 268. Uh, and we could get those exact numbers, but it, it's somewhere in that ballpark.
If, if Dr. Dale would just run a few more grants, we could take care of that problem.
Yeah, so you're saying of the grants you do get, that you, part of it is designated to pay indirect costs, and that's what the 200 grand is?
All of the indirect costs that are generated from all of our grants stays with the college.
Yeah.
Uh, we, you know, I, I have to admit, I've argued fairly long and hard, uh, quite a bit of time, that I'd like to have some of that money to invest in new initiatives, but it, you know, it rightfully stays with the college, and, you know, there are expenses there, and, you know, we want to be budget neutral, so we've got to move towards having that fully covered.
Okay.
We have several people here from Engrake in the audience. If they could just stand and be recognized, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
And discussion items, uh, really informational items.
I promise I only have twice as much as Gary had to say. No, really quickly, um, the construction status report is on page nine in the board book, and, um, above and beyond what's there, just a few updates. The, um, Riverbend Arena project is, is coming along nicely. We were walking through the building today. They actually laid the first pieces of the gym floor down, so we're getting excited about that. Most of the painting is done in the gym, so the gym is progressing, um, on schedule as we need to be in there, um, by August 1st, I think is our first day of volleyball practice, so we're getting there. Um, upstairs, the demolition is nearly complete. We just have flooring and a little bit of duck work to go, and then we'll start, uh, the renovation upstairs as well. Um, everything is still on track there. Uh, on the main complex, foundation improvements, uh, the big news there is that CDB and AIC have finally, uh, finalized and fully executed that contract as of May 31st since our last board meeting. So, um, that'll be moving forward with the bid process again this summer and the fall, uh, the project taking place in the fall. And then on that northeast campus site lighting improvement project, uh, with the contract that was approved, uh, at our last week's meeting, uh, we did have the coordination and pre-construction meeting on Friday. We do have a plan. Uh, the contractor does feel confident that we can get substantially complete, uh, by that August 19th date. So we're going to start in Fountain Court and then work our way to, uh, the external areas so that we'll be ready for the start of fall classes, and that project hopefully won't impede that, so. Any questions?
Yeah, I think I have a couple of questions. On the, the, uh, arena, arena renovation there, when it says funded by PHS, Personal Health, Safety and Capital Project, does that mean it's, it's not really Lewis and Clark's money, it's grants, or it's, what, what does that mean?
The protection, health, life, safety is a bond.
Bond funds.
Bond funds.
It's a bond fund?
Uh-huh.
Okay. And then it's capital and capital project, that just means?
It's, not everything in the project was PHS-eligible.
Yeah.
So for instance, flooring, paint, those things aren't protection, health, life, safety, but all the, most of the building is HVAC, uh, roof, the ADA compliance issues that we had to deal with in there, so those are all PHS-funded, um, eligible.
Okay, so no grant money?
Right.
So that's, I mean, in the bottom, the bottom line is, it's all local dollars?
It's all bond funds.
Yeah. Okay. And, um, and then on the, on the, the lighting improvement, uh, it says funded by PHS savings. I'm not sure what that, can you guys talk about that?
So, um, anytime, uh, we close out a, uh, an approved PHS project, um, we don't, we usually stay under budget, and so that creates a pool of savings. So as projects come up that need, um, emergency repairs, HVAC issues, we'll come to the board and request the use of those PHS savings, uh, before we would go out to bid and, and start on those projects.
Okay.
By the way, that goes from this board to the Illinois Community College Board. It has to also approve those funds for that purpose.
Right. They require our board to approve them first.
Oh, you mean like, if there's an excess, like, if you're under, under budget, you can't just spend that however you want to?
Right.
You have to go through an approval process, yeah?
Exactly.
Last Tuesday night, when I was talking about academic affairs and the work that's done in that division of the college, I mentioned to you that much of that work is done in collaboration with faculty. This item lists out for you, and I hope you can read it, it's a little shadowy in the book, but this lists all of the committees that every spring, near the end of the academic year, faculty are invited to select one or two or three of these committees. We try to give faculty the committees that they want to serve on. Um, and you can see in that final column, other IAI and other committees, they serve on state committees as well, which of course, um, accrues to our benefit when we have faculty serving on state committees. This is always brought to the board in June of the year, just so that you can see the committees that are in play in academic affairs and the numbers of faculty who are engaged in that work. You're welcome. I'm going to just continue to stand up here. Um, the other item that I had this evening was the opportunity to talk to you about a presentation that Dr. Dennis Crebe and Dr. Jill Lane conducted, um, for the state of Illinois. We've spoken about the co-requisite remediation that the college has engaged in, especially in English and mathematics. We actually had a team, a five-person team, representing math, Randy Gallagher representing writing, was Justin Burnett, um, Dr. Jill Lynch, Dr. Dennis Crebe, um, me, and we were doing presentations both in the state and nationally. This is the most recent paper that has come out of the work that we've been doing, and it really is the work of all of the faculty in mathematics and English, as well as all of the academic advisors. It's taken a lot of people to reach this stage of success. They were invited and paid, their expenses paid, to go up and deliver this Illinois Equity and Attainment Spring Summit presentation, and it was on accelerating into college-level coursework with through co-requisite remediation. So that's about 10 presentations that have resulted from this work. Any questions on either? Thank you.
Now we have action items. A, approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities. Need a motion to approve that? Second. Okay. It's been, uh, motion's been made and, and seconded. Uh, will there be a discussion on the approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities?
We'll just, just comment, this is also a result of the board policy that you would want to see, uh, any, uh, sponsored projects opportunities, uh, early in the process so that, you know, you see those before people actually submit them, so that's kind of what this is.
So my concern when I'm looking at these is that a lot of them require matching funds. I didn't add them all up, but some of them are quite significant, so, like, where do those funds come from? It's like adult educational literacy, amount requested 550,000, matching funds required 127,000.
Dr. Harris is here.
In that case, the matching funds are required on the, on the front end to demonstrate, um, that we're adding resources to the project. They're not required on the, the back end, we don't have to document them, um, but we just wanted to include them for your information.
So where does that money come from?
That's not, it's not, we don't have to actually match the funds. Once we get them, we have to demonstrate that we're, they're, they come from other grants, um, but they're not being documented on the back end. It's hard to understand if you're not involved in it. They're not true matching funds.
So maybe it'd be in the form of people, uh, working, or?
No, this is just literally in the application. It is not required for us to match, but there are other grants that we get that are, that do require matching funds, and youth build, for example. So those, those dollars come from either state funds, the, of other grants that we do, like the ICCB Adult Education Grant. We use those funds to match the youth build grant.
And there are requirements on what kind of match you can use. You can't match federal dollars with federal dollars.
Right.
And you have to match federal dollars with state dollars or other, so, uh, but, but very, I don't think, very few institutional dollars would go into these.
Yeah, so youth build was another question, because we're requesting a million five, but we have to come up with 375. So you're telling me that that's like, not going to come out of the education operating fund, or?
Well, the majority of it is, it's part of it, part of my salary matches, and it's over three years. So it's, um, I'm just trying to think of what, what the, we, we pay for instructional costs out of our ICCB state grants, and those costs match the youth build grant.
Uh-huh.
Some of the costs that we pay for security officers help match the youth build grant. Uh, I said my salary, some of the other staff members that you work on youth build, uh, match those grants, so that it's?
Yeah, so then, like, in the 1.5 million, then does the college get, uh? So then, like in the 1.5 million, then does the college get reimbursed for indirect costs?
Oh, yeah. They get a 10% indirect on that one. And that one hasn't been written yet, so we don't know how much we'll get.
You don't know whether you're going to get the full 1.5 million at this point? So you don't know what the...what the administrative override is?
Right. Do August 6th.
But you think it's 10%? Yeah? You think it's 10%?
That's what we'll ask for.
I noticed on one of them, there's a...let's see, on page 12...yeah, 12J. It's a $1 million amount requested, but a 35...or 37% overhead for Lewis and Clark. Does that mean that Lewis and Clark will basically get $370,000?
Right. So that's a National Science Foundation, federal projects. And so if you look at college/university indirect cost rates, they can range... It's a percentage of total direct cost typically. So the universities would have up to 60% indirect cost on a grant. So ours is 37%. That's a negotiated rate that we have that carries across all federal agencies. We'd always get that, but that's our rate. In this case, the National Science Foundation pays the total rate. So yes.
In that one, are those people located here? Or where will they be located?
Right. Tony, is that your project? Tony, you want to speak to that? Tony, here.
Which project was that?
The population and community ecology, a million something.
Yeah, so I would say about...it hasn't been written yet. About three people will be based here. One will be based at Washington University. And one will be based at Princeton University.
And these are highly competitive grants. And we, you know, we're complying that we're showing you what we're doing before we're doing it. But there's no guarantees on these.
There's a guaranteed 37%, like that's written into it. Whatever cash comes out, yeah.
Well, I know this might be annoying that we're requesting this information, but I think it's just...it's in your favor. The more information we get, the better off you are. So we're all learning in this process. I know it might be annoying to some to have to put all this in here, but else, we're just not going to know what's going on. So thank you for putting all this in here.
Can I explain a little bit about the indirect costs? If the total grant is a million dollars, the indirect cost is within that million dollars. So you back into that amount. So I just wanted to make sure that if the grant is a million dollars, we won't get 370,000. I mean, we'll get a percentage, but it won't be that much. Just wanted to clarify. Okay.
I just wanted to say something. It's not annoying. We love sharing information with the board. It's that the timelines are sometimes really tight. So if we're not getting permission to write something until... Like if we wouldn't have found out about youth build on Friday, and we would have had to wait till the July meeting to get permission to write, we would have had less than four weeks to write a highly competitive federal grant. So that's just to give you a little background. Thanks.
I think there may need to be adjustments in the policy so we don't stifle people's creativity and drive for going after grants.
Any further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve...for approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities. Call for the vote?
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is fiscal year 2021 Resource Allocation Management Plan called RAMP. Is there a motion to approve? Been a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Gloria's here to kind of explain the ICCB requirement for submitting a grant.
So ICCB requires every year that we submit our RAMP grant. It's due by July 1st of each year. And it just outlines what our requests would be for capital funds for projects we would have. This year's RAMP document represents $32 million in four projects. And those are listed. I think you have a copy of that RAMP document. Just as a bit of comparison, I think last year's was just under 54 million, which of course included that main complex, which we took out of this year's because we do feel confident about that funding that Dale talked about earlier. So those projects include the roadway improvements that we would plan for on campus, along with parking lot improvements, sidewalk improvements, a new automotive and diesel mechanic technology center that's the result of that new program, the diesel technology programming, a student success center, which has remained on our RAMP document for quite a few years. It's a goal to basically centralize all of our student services to better serve our students. And then a rural workforce innovation center that was also on last year's RAMP document as well. As I say every year, these are wish lists. It's been quite a few years since we've ever had a RAMP project funded. I think it's NO Nelson was the last time that the state funded something that we actually requested through a RAMP. So...but we are required each year to submit what those capital wishes would be. So...
So like that...I think you said the deadline was July 1st. What if we missed that deadline? What would be the repercussions of that?
Well, I think that we have our ICCB recognition visit this summer. So I'm guessing we'd probably get slapped for that one. So...
Okay. You get slapped when you say you don't need money? That's...okay. Next question. What if they...what if they approve something? Which, like you said, isn't very likely. But let's say they do. Can the board at that point say, oh, we changed our mind. We don't want that money after all?
I assume we could reject funds.
The reason I'm asking that is because all of these have a pretty large local match. And we've already got obviously a pretty substantial debt load. And we need to watch that closely.
Right. And we would be required to have that 25% match for any of these projects at any given year. So...
Unless we get lucky again, like we just did.
Right.
Yeah, it's hard to say. It's difficult to know through the state budget process whether they're going to hold you to the match or not. So we typically community colleges have the match in there, so we put it in there. But a lot of times, we don't have a match required. But you know, it could be, so we put it in there.
Right.
Yeah, so I have the same concern. If you add all these up, it requires 8 million in debt. So I don't want to commit to that. Can we approve it without the debt? I mean, it's good to have a wish list. It's good to plan ahead. It's good to know what you need. But I, as a trustee, I'm not willing to commit to issuing 8 million in debt.
We're not committing to issuing 8 million in debt tonight. What we're doing is submitting a RAMP document required by ICCB for our priority projects to go into all of the other community college priority projects in Illinois to be then sandwiched into all of the higher education projects at the universities. And then there's some sort of a priority list that then would be put together. And we have plenty of time to...if we're so fortunate to have this kind of problem, we have plenty of time to debate it.
I guess the other thing is...sorry.
So just to be clear, we're not committing to college or the board or the citizens of our district to this money tonight.
Because there is a document in here called Board of Trustees Matching Funds Commitment. It has to be signed by the chair.
Yeah.
So that's a little concerning.
That's if it's funded and if, you know, if the college chooses to accept it at the time.
Okay. And then I don't feel like I know if we need an automotive and diesel technology center. And I don't know if we need a student...I guess I feel a little uninformed to approve these things. So that's where...and I don't even know where is this workforce innovation center going to be? $5 million?
So taking one at a time, I think that, you know, the...pretty obvious that we need roads. So that's one of the projects on there. It's our top priority. You know, those are funds that we, you know, we'd have to come up with either through local funds or request it from the state. And on the diesel program, you know, the academic and research people at the college here have studied this and basically, you know, determined that there's a demand. That's what the MZ studies are about. You know, we've researched this. There are jobs. There are good-paying jobs. It's an extension of our automotive tech program. And so there's the support from the auto industry in our district and in the region. The mass transit can't find diesel mechanics. There's, you know, trucks, buses, also barges, you know, engines for barge traffic. So that's pretty well established. And then there's no place to put it. We don't have any particular facilities on the campus to do that. So we require facilities to do that, and that's what this is for.
And I would just add to that, these projects come to us throughout the year. And you'll, you know, as we do our strategic planning, these projects align with what the strategic plans and goals of the college are in particular programs and of course in our roadways, as Dale said, would be the priority.
I think just on the rural project, we have these...we have Green County. We have Cajon County. We have Jersey County, parts of McCougan County, parts of Madison County, actually. And if you look at the economies of those counties and the population of those counties and the workforce readiness of those counties, you know, and you look at what people do there now for industry and work, a lot of it has to do with farming and agricultural occupational vocations. So the idea of that is to work with our...those counties. And we're doing that now to kind of frame a center of this nature. And it's very early in the process.
Julie, I understand your concern about if we would get all this money. But I've been on this board for quite a few years, not as long as Bob. This is a Christmas list. And you don't get what you want for Christmas every year. And I guarantee you, if we don't apply for these, we're not going to get anything. You have to...you have to apply for it before you can turn it down. So we need really...we need this RAMP document. And I, like I say, this is the first time this year that I think we got a significant amount of money out of the state. And I got a document here that shows what the different colleges got. And Lewis and Clark did very well. I think we're number two on this list. So we need to be happy. Christmas came.
This isn't a question really on... This isn't a question really on RAMP exactly, but on the automotive and diesel program. Are we...weren't we approved to do that? And aren't we already doing this?
Automotive tech, but not...oh, sorry. Mrs. Zawinski, welcome to the microphones.
I would try to use my outside voice. Right now, we do have an automotive tech program. It's very successful. We did get permission to start developing curriculum for a diesel program. The problem is our automotive tech fills...is...fills all of our capacity. Our two bays, our two garages are filled. Every bay is filled with the coursework that we have now. Also trucks, much larger, to try to get those in into our facilities is going to be tougher to do. We are going to start. We do want to start. We are developing a certificate program right now in diesel technology. But to be able to go full-blown into a full diesel program, we're going to need more space. So that's...we're putting it on the Christmas list, hoping that someday, by the time we get that curriculum in place, by the time we get the students all lined up and ready to go, Christmas might come and we might get a bigger facility or at least be able to expand our facility a bit. So we're asking for the world. We're starting with what we can have. We got that gift, that engine that was donated to us. We take donations from everybody. And that's how we get started.
We also purchased two used tractors from a school, a public... a for-profit school that sold out.
Yep.
When I say tractors, semi-tractors.
Right. 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 We were able to get a lot of equipment. When the for-profit schools went under, we were able to get those at a really, really low cost at auction. So...
And Dr. Chapman asked me before we started this program, you know, if there's a need. And I contacted...because you're in my arena now. And I contacted some of the truck dealers that we deal with. And they said a diesel mechanic is harder to find now than a truck driver. They're just...because of the technology. So, you know, and our job here is to put people to work and give them a degree and something to make a living. And if we have a diesel mechanic program here and we can graduate, I guarantee you there'll be people lined up at the door.
A good number of our mechanics, our auto mechanics, are being hired and then retrained by the owners themselves. And so if we...yeah, we just want to get ahead of it.
But you need bigger space.
Bigger space.
For trucks because you've got...
Bigger equipment, bigger everything.
You need 14-foot doors. I don't think you get 14-foot doors.
Right.
And this is for Lori, just for my knowledge and the public knowledge. So all of these capital requests include AE fees. What's that?
Architectural and engineering fees.
Okay. And is that a percentage usually? Or how do you calculate that?
I do believe that is a percentage of the total cost, yeah.
Okay. And then observation? What's that?
Well, that's to your question last month about, you know, who manages these construction projects and who's qualified to do that? So these...any project that is awarded through the state requires construction management observation onsite because they're...we're trying to protect our investment, but the state wants to protect their dollar investment as well.
Do we always have one firm we use for that? Or who do we...who does that?
We tend to use our architectural firm.
Okay.
To cover those site observation hours, yes.
So if I might...so if it's a capital development board project and they're...it's coming through the capital development board, and these are designed as if that's going to happen, then the state's interest in this requires the CDB to observation. But also then, they represent the state. So our interest is represented by the architects. So that we, you know, until...and that's actually the state's building until they turn it over to us.
And I should say, depending on the project, if it's an...if it's a... if it's, for instance, our lighting project, that is through the engineer who designed that lighting project, not through AIC.
And the fees are not set by us. They're set by CDB.
And then reimbursables? What's that?
Bid documents, you know.
Okay. And that goes to us usually? Or...yeah. Art in architecture?
That is a requirement by the state. What is it? One-half of 1% of all projects?
Must be spent on art or, you know, or art. So some of the sculptures and paintings and things around. It's a statutory requirement that one-half of 1% of all construction, if it's a CDB project, must be spent on art.
I know you mentioned that to me one time. I mean, does that actually have to be art on the wall? Or can it just be an arch in the building or something?
It's where you'll find a lot of our sculptures on campus have come from.
There's about seven different kinds of art forms it can be.
Wow. Okay.
Any more discussion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve fiscal year 2021, the RAMP. Call for the vote?
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
No.
Next item is C, Protection of Miners Policy. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So move.
A second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Protection Miners Policy. Any discussion?
I would just add, putting on my policy hat now, this is a policy that's been specifically requested by our...
requested by our insurance carrier, but it's also a requirement under state law. And so we've developed this, it just designs a set of protocol and procedures. Our employees are all considered mandated reporters by the state of Illinois. So any knowledge of child abuse, sexual misconduct, child pornography, it is a requirement for our employees and our volunteers, I should add, to report those to the proper agencies. And so we are asking for approval of this policy that will be put in place.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Item D, Resolution 19-10, Public Hearing Fiscal Year 2020, Proposed Budget, Page 15. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the public hearing of the proposed budget. Any discussion?
This would occur, you know, just prior to the July board meeting.
If no discussion, call for the vote.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Next is public comment. Three-minute limit on that, I believe.
I am Dr. Gerald Mosher. I'm a 20-year-plus faculty member. The beliefs expressed in social media by the newly-elected chair of the board are significantly troubling. And this is something I hoped to have heard two meetings ago. So since he has not offered an apology or otherwise acknowledged that his social media posting was inappropriate, to put it mildly, Chairman Haines excuses his expression of these beliefs by saying it was to generate conversation. But let us be clear that his conversation starter was the assertion that all terrorists are Muslims. This claim is not only patently false, but morally and socially offensive, bigoted, racist, and intolerant. Chairman Hyon demonstrates a complete lack of intellectual humility and remaining defiant about this exposure of his personal beliefs. We wish him more power of reflection so that he might come to understand the magnitude of his error. However, be that as it may, and in the same vein as Chairman Hyon, I offer the following reflections as a conversation starter. Now the beliefs sanctioned by Chairman Haines' posting in social media is not just an opinion that may differ from others, but stems from a pathology that is most dangerous. For everyone present here, to understand this danger, I can find no better description of this pathology than the following. Historian Robert Goldston, in his book, The Civil War in Spain, writes, and I quote, "But fascism, which is anti-intellectual, is not so much a system of thought, not so much a definable political position, as it is an emotional disease. It has been different in each country. It is marked by fear, basically the fear that breeds hatred and intolerance of whatever is different. Whatever does not conform to the simplest patterns of behavior, whatever cannot be directly and completely controlled. Frightened by the problems and the complexities of modern life, fascists seek to simplify through destruction and control through force. Fascism is a psychological condition that can be found among people of all countries, including our own," unquote. And I would comment that he is an American citizen. I share this description not to call anyone a name, but to call attention to the character of the statements and beliefs that now alarm us. Statements that imply that all terrorists are Muslims, that our problems in this country are caused by others outside our borders, or those seeking asylum across our borders, are all of the same character. Why should they alarm us? They should alarm us as they are of a piece of the same fabric which, of which tyranny and totalitarianism are made. What we face here today in Godfrey, Illinois, with the issues swirling around the board chair, is the issue of people who appear disdainful of educated discussion and unresponsive to basic canons of reasonfulness. Patently false and offensive beliefs are defended as if they were on par with beliefs about who will win the World Series, or what makes the best appetizer before dinner. If such beliefs are not challenged, or are not repudiated, or otherwise qualified by those who assert them, then these beliefs will begin to receive a legitimacy they do not deserve. And if they do achieve a sense of legitimacy, our nation is in a very perilous position. To put it bluntly, should the United States of America fail to check such beliefs and the people who endorse them, it may find itself in a similar predicament as Germany of the 1930s and 40s. As Professor Goldston insightfully reminds us, fascism.
Time, Mr. Mosher.
Is different in different countries. Scapegoating is one primary tactic of the fascists, and for some in the U.S. today, it would be Muslims for perhaps foreigners.
Hi, thank you. Michael Lemmons, Faculty Association President. You know, to continue on what Dr. Mosher said, you know, in his defiance, Chairman Hyon blames a small faction for this controversy. But he fails to understand the majority of U.S. citizens detest such racist, intolerant, ill-informed, and simple-minded beliefs. Such beliefs are not reflective of an educated mind and do not reflect well of a leader of an educated, educational institution. This institution's integrity and well-being are at stake. So as long as Mr. Hyon enjoys the status of chair of the board, his beliefs enjoy similar status. He admittedly says that he was acting as an individual and not as a representative of Lewis and Clark, but that is a red herring. The issue is that those beliefs are associated with Dr. Chairman Hyon, are now associated with the college. This places the college in a difficult predicament. It advertises the commitment to diversity, tolerance, and the respect for others, but contradicts those commitments. Lewis and Clark Community College cannot be a house-divided. Our common good calls for immediate action. If Mr. Hyon will not issue a repudiation or an apology for the message of his postings, then I ask the board to call for a vote of all Lewis and Clark Community College employees, as to their support of Mr. Hyon. But if that vote shows a majority do not support him, then he must step down and be replaced. I ask this in the well-being of the college. In summary, we go through sensitivity training here as employees of the college. We're all requested to do that. At minimum, Chairman Hyon should have to do the same. At minimum, there should be an apology for those remarks. Thank you.
I am Dr. Ed Ragzeal. I practiced medicine in this area for many years. I have a home not far from here in Godfrey. Lewis and Clark College is a major asset to our area. One of my sons received an associate degree here, and subsequently got a university degree with honors. We have attended many community events in the college. I hope they will continue to be affordable. The newspaper coverage of the last board meeting was very upsetting to me. I got to know David Hyon when we both testified at state legislative hearings. We both advocated more intelligent state spending, cutting waste, and keeping taxes in line. Unfortunately, the Chicago liberals who run the state didn't listen. Illinois has unfunded pension liability of at least $250 billion. Moody's rates Illinois bonds as one step above junk. I am very pleased the newly-elected board members are committed to fiscal responsibility. I have known Chuck Hanfelder for at least 45 years. We worked for good government together here in Madison County. We helped put a float, supporting our veterans each year in the Memorial Day Parade. When Chuck's sons gave a birthday party two years ago, the crowd filled a large church community room. Illinois has one of the highest tax burdens and one of the worst business climates in the nation. We are losing population and tax revenues to other states. This is affecting our colleges. Each year, Illinois loses over 20,000 students to other states. Many of these students, perhaps a majority, will not return to Illinois. Our capitalist free-market system has greatly lifted up our citizens economically. It is by far the freest and fairest system that exists. The community college plays an important role in workforce development and teaching skills needed for the economy. I'm a big advocate of lifelong learning, rewarding educational excellence, and academic achievement. Some colleges and universities have been hurt by activism and radicalism. Parents don't want to send their kids to a school where activism eclipses academics. Being a board member is an important unpaid, thankless job often. I thank each of you for donating your time and thought to this task. I urge you to all work cooperatively to achieve important projects and improvements. We can always improve. Thank you.
Hi, Coral Kimball. I'm in the math department here at the college. I know most people are concerned about the racist posts in social media, but that's not my concern. When I was reading the articles in the newspaper about everything before the election and the new board members, it said, or you said that you voted to approve contract. And then after the new board came in, or the new board members came in, you voted against the contract. And when you were asked, why did you vote for the contracts before and not now, you said you were going with the crowd when you voted yes. My concern is, that is not leadership. And when I read that, it scared me, because leaders are supposed to stand up to the crowd and stand up for what they believe. And if you didn't believe in those contracts before, but you didn't vote against them, that shows your character, that you weren't courageous enough to stand up to the crowd. And I know I've been there, and it is scary. And so that's just something that I want you to think about, Mr. Hyon. You know, and maybe, I don't know, just be humble enough to admit that you weren't courageous enough to stand up for your beliefs. Thank you.
My name's Alan Lash, and I'm the former CEO and chairman of the board of Agro Solutions and Family Farms. I ran those companies for over 50 years. And I'm here tonight to ask the board to rescind your policy as relates to grants and as relates to contracts, as we've seen tonight and has been spoken to by the group. After the May and June meetings, June 4th, I became really concerned about what I was hearing. So I did a little research. Grants and contracts here generate 30% of this college's revenue. They help lower taxes. They help make tuition affordable. They provide critical opportunities for students. And it's helped this award-winning university be able to be successful in applying for additional grants, i.e., I'll give you the example of the $41 million state grant. Without past success, we wouldn't have gotten the $41 million. This administration has been outstanding, and their process is a proven process. Yet your policy changes are micromanaging grants, and that just doesn't work. If we don't get grants, we're going to have to raise either tuition or taxes. Neither one are acceptable. You need to relook at that policy. Timelines for grants have already been spoken to. They're short. Your meetings cannot be timed to work on those. And the thought that you're going to approve grants before they even are submitted, incomprehensible to me. Your actions indicate you're not thinking about the benefits of grants and contracts and non-tax revenues. You're putting our grant process and our grant results at risk, and it's millions of dollars, millions of dollars that we're dealing with. In closing, in any budget discussions, and I've put together hundreds of budgets, revenue was one of the very first things you focused on. We didn't focus on revenue at all in the June 4th meeting. We have to rethink that. And you have to rethink the process that you put in place to do that. When I read the policy change, I couldn't believe it. I don't know how a CEO can manage in that. You're only jeopardizing the grants that this college can get in the future. When you do that, you'll force taxes or tuitions to be raised. That's going to betray your voters. So I am asking you, rescind your prior policy. Get one that allows for these successful people to put a policy, or to put their process in place that ensures grants. Last month, I said, don't screw it up, right? This time, I'm saying to you, don't continue to screw it up.
Any more comments? If not, we stand adjourn.